Standby for scroll. Standby for 30. Thirty away. Twenty. Fifteen. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good morning Commissioners, Akeem Ashford, Director of Communications for Sedgwick County. Welcome to the Wednesday, September 8th, 2021 Board of County Commissioner meeting. To kick off this morning Commissioners, we'd first like to congratulate two of our own's, uh, two of our own for the Excellence in Public Service Award. These two actually won the awards for this year, uh, two of actually, four, uh, that were presented for this year. Uh, so we first like to say congratulations to Judy Dotson, Cedric County Zoo, and Narcisco Nerveus, Cedric County Sheriff's Office. I'll bring up his picture. There he is there. They are the recipients of the 2021 Excellence in Public Service Award. Due to the cancellation of last year's award, the DeVeau Foundation is honoring six winners, two per organization, from the City of Wichita, Cedric County, and Wichita Public Schools. The Excellence in Public Service Award honors public employees who go beyond the call of duty and exhibit the highest standard of service. So we'd like to say congratulations to both Judy and Narcisco. All right, moving on Commissioners, we'd like to now talk about the Q-List system. This system was implemented by our management interns as well as the Cedric County Health Department, so thank you to our interns. The management interns of the Health Department implemented Q-List. This is also a system that is used by the Tag Office. So people who have already been to the Tag Office may be familiar with this system. With the increase in testing requests, the system fills up within about an hour of opening. The average wait time is about an hour and a half at this point. It's been a positive addition Commissioners, and we're looking forward to more feedback from folks who are using the system so that we can continue to improve it. To actually sign up for the Q-List system for the Health Department, you just go to CedricCounty.org/covid-19, and you will find the instructions for text messages. The system will send you a alert letting you know that you are in line, and also give you a timeframe until you're able to go up and get your tests. Moving on Commissioners, Zuba Lee, as you know, the Cedric County Zoo is celebrating its 50th birthday this year, and so that's going to be a big part of this year's BASH, the Zuba Lee Celebration, September 11th, which is this weekend, 2021. For more information, go to Cedric County Zoo on their Facebook and Twitter page to follow them, or visit their website for more information. And I am told that you can actually buy tickets the day of the event, so you don't have to buy them in advance. All right Commissioners, now looking at today's agenda, we've got a proclamation declaring National Suicide Prevention Week. Dr. Claus from the KU School of Medicine is here to accept that proclamation. We've got a Cedric County Suicide Prevention Coalition 2020 Suicide Data Report that you'll hear from Dr. Claus. A presentation of the input received from the Community Needs Assessment related to the American Rescue Plan, or ARPA. Resolution creating new Cedric County Personnel Policies and Procedures that will be presented by Sheena Smuts, Director of Human Resources. A report of the bids and contracts, a regular meeting from their September 2nd meeting. With that Chairman, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay, thank you Akeem, and good morning everybody, and I think it's worth repeating to congratulate Narcisco and Judy on the award that they received. We're, some of us were able to be present at both those presentations, and it was highly, highly accepted, and you could tell those people were well deserved. And I want to again thank the DeVeau family for this continued effort. I think it's 39 years going, something like that, 29 or 39, but it's a long time. So thank you to the DeVeau family for continuing this and for being present as well. So with that, I would like to call the Wednesday, September 8th Cedric County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Madam Clerk, first item.
invocation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner Lopez.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Commissioners, there's, there's a couple items here on Public Agenda. We received a copy of Public Agenda comments that came into our website after 3:30 on the 20th, when we had the special meeting on August 20th that evening. And so we received a copy of those that came in. At, with 3:30 was the cutoff for the four o'clock meeting, we received more comments after that, and then a few during the meeting and subsequently. So I'd like to, if you reviewed those or seen them, we did all receive a copy of those. So I, my first item is that we accept, receive and file the public comments that were received by our website for the August 20th special meeting.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any other questions, comments, being none? There's a motion in a second to approve those. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And the second item is we did receive public comment for today's meeting, as of five o'clock, or whatever the cutoff was, five o'clock last night. So we received a number of those by email. Any comments or questions about those? And if not, I'll make a motion to receive and file those public comments.
Second.
Motion in a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And then thirdly, did anybody sign up? Do we have anybody for public speaking today? We didn't have anybody. So, but lastly, there's been some questions about, now that we're moved to a new, so about when do we, it's been, we cut off at five o'clock the night before for pub, for signing up for public comment the morning after. And we don't, we can do it as a public meeting, or I've asked Tom, can you just poll whatever, whatever the Commissioners want? If we want to allow people to sign up up to nine o'clock meeting is fine, or do we want to keep the policy of, or the practice that we've had of, of five o'clock the night before? We don't have to decide that right now, I didn't want to catch any of you off guard. I just, why don't we, either Tom can poll and determine if we ought to have a public discussion about it, about, a public discussion about a public comment, or, or continue on with the five o'clock. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you Chairman, I don't, I don't substantially see a difference between someone signing up the day before and appearing before the BOCC in person versus someone signing up at the meeting. And it's been our practice for most of the years that I've been here, we've allowed people to sign up the morning of the meeting up until nine o'clock. In fact, just a minute ago, you asked if there's anybody that signed up this morning, and you know, that's been our typical practice for, for quite a long time now, even after post-COVID, I'm actually out of COVID, you know, obviously, but we've been doing it this way for a while, is my point. And yesterday, there was a message that was sent out that people would have to, would have to contact our Communications Department prior to, prior to five o'clock yesterday to actually speak before us this morning, and I don't think that's accurate. So I personally think we ought to go back to what we've been doing, and if we're going to have mitigations to not have people speak in front of us at all, we can have that discussion, but I think as long as people come before us, we ought to allow them to speak, to sign up at as late as nine o'clock in the morning, the day of our meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Well, I think there are two aspects to this. One are the written comments that come in through our website, and I think those still need to come in by five o'clock, because that's the only way that I'm going to have an opportunity to review them, and for us to be able to make any recommendations to staff or anyone else as a result of those comments. And the second one is people that want to come in person, and I have no problem with someone coming in person and signing up the day of. So I think there is a distinction between the two. Thank you Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, and Commissioner Cruz?
Um, thank you Chairman. It is our job to listen to constituents and the public, so I don't have an issue with them signing up the day before. I would be fine with that.
Okay, and do you have an opinion Commissioner Lopez?
I don't care.
Okay, and I don't either, so why don't, I mean, I'm good with letting the public sign up until nine o'clock before the meeting on Tuesdays going forward, is our practice. Okay? So we resolve that, so you don't have to do, you don't have to do any work on that. Okay? Any other thoughts or comments about the public agenda? I don't see any, so next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, Special Meeting Minutes of July 23rd, 2021.
Commissioners, if you see, we do have a series of minutes from five different meetings. I'd like to bundle those together to approve unless anybody wants to talk about any one of them individually. If you do, and if not, I'm going to make a motion on A, B, C, D, E to approve the special minutes, to approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 23rd, the special meeting of July 27th, the regular meeting of August 4th, the special meeting of August 5th, and the regular meeting of August 11th. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of those five meetings. Any other comments or questions, being none? Madam Clerk, please, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. The next item, please.
Proclamations, item F, Proclamation Declaring National Suicide Prevention Week.
Commissioner Cruz, please.
Thank you Chairman. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11 minutes, with an average of 130 deaths by suicide a day. Every 3.4 days, someone in Sedgwick County dies by suicide. And whereas psychological studies have consistently found that the overwhelming majority of people who die by suicide, 90% or more, had a mental disorder at the time of their deaths, and often, these disorders had not been recognized, diagnosed, or adequately treated. And whereas far too many Sedgwick County residents and Kansans die by suicide each year, and most of these deaths are preventable. In 2020, 105 Sedgwick County residents died by suicide. And whereas the mission of the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition is to promote and implement evidence-based approaches, local research, and community change to reduce the impact of suicide with the ultimate goal of zero suicides in Sedgwick County. And whereas in Sedgwick County, help is available by calling the Suicide Prevention Hotline 24 hours a day, seven days per week, at 316-660-7500. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Lacey Cruz, on behalf of Chairman Peter F. Meitzner, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September 5th through the 11th, 2021, as National Suicide Prevention Week. The topic of suicide will continue to challenge us all to increase our awareness and education, and I call upon the residents of our community to join me in learning to recognize the signs of someone at risk, taking those signs seriously and knowing how to respond. With the challenges that COVID-19 pandemic has brought to our community and the effects this has had on everyone, it is especially important that we challenge ourselves to recognize Suicide Prevention Week this year. Chairman, I will make a motion to adopt this proclamation.
I'll second that, thank you for reading that. Commissioners, any other comments? It's very serious stuff, so thank you for that proclamation. There's a motion in a second to approve the proclamation. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And accepted this morning by Dr. Nicole Claus of KU Medical, or School of Medicine. Good morning.
Morning Doctor.
Good morning Chairman Meitzner, Commissioners. I am Nicole Claus from KU School of Medicine, and on behalf of the Cedric County Suicide Prevention Coalition, I accept this proclamation, and just want to invite the community to learn more about risk factors for suicide, and to learn how to communicate about suicide, and get help for yourself or others in our community, so that we can reduce our numbers. I also have a 2020 annual report on suicide numbers in Sedgwick County that I can share with you.
Okay, I think that's part of your next, the next item.
It is.
Why don't we wait until we do that officially? Okay, thank you Doctor. We'll see you in another minute. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item G, Cedric County Suicide Prevention Coalition 2020 Suicide Data Report.
Okay, welcome Dr. Claus again.
Thank you. All right. So these data have been collected over the past 20 years by the Cedric County Suicide Prevention Coalition, and this couldn't have been done without collaborations with the Health Department and the Regional Forensic Science Center, so I want to acknowledge their contributions. And in 2020, we lost 105 Cedric County citizens to suicide, which is a rate of 20 per 100,000. And in the 20 years that we've been collecting this data, Cedric County rates have been consistently higher than national rates, and we can see that our rate is also rising more quickly than national rates. In 2019, our numbers had gone down a little bit, and they went back up in 2020, so this is the highest rate that we've seen in the 20 years we've been collecting data, and it's consistent with that, that overall rising trend that we've been seeing for, for the past several years. When we break down our suicide rates by age, we can see that 15 to 54-year-olds have the highest rates of suicide in our community. And looking at it by gender, we can see that the increased suicide numbers the past year are largely accounted for by men, and typically, our breakdown is about 75% men, 25% women. This past year, our deaths were 90% men. We are also seeing rising trends in rates of suicide deaths by firearm. So the, the 2020 numbers are consistent with that, that rising trend that we've been seeing over the past several years. And, yeah, one of the reasons that we collect these data locally are to have more current numbers. And so we, we pulled the numbers for the first half of 2021 to look at as well, and there's a little more noise when we try to look at it by month. But as of June, for the first half of 2021, we've recorded 37 suicide deaths for this year, which is similar to what we saw the first half of 2019, when the numbers were down a little bit. In 2020, for the first half of the year, there were 49 deaths. So we are hopeful that this trend will continue in the, the second half of 2021. When we look at our local deaths by suicide, just over half of them have a known documented history of mental illness and/or suicidal ideation. And 18% had a known history of previous suicide attempts. There may be more that just weren't known or documented in the autopsy report. We have also been trying to document life stressors and things that, precipitating factors that may have contributed to, to some of these deaths locally. And so what we saw in 2020 was a similar pattern to what we've seen in previous years, where relationship stressors were the most common noted stressor in younger individuals who died of suicide, whereas physical health stressors were the most common noted stressor in older individuals who died of suicide. Only 5% of the deaths in 2020 specifically mentioned COVID-19 in, in the autopsy report. And we actually saw lower numbers of autopsies that mentioned job or financial stressors than we have in previous years. This year, 13% of our deaths were among veterans. And I also want to highlight some of our local suicide prevention efforts. There are some new things going on this year that I'm really excited about. We have, well, Calm Care has expanded their offerings of mental health first aid, and trained over 100 people in mental health first aid in 2020. I, I love that that number is almost identical to the number of deaths we had in 2020. And we have 80 people trained so far in 2021, with seven more classes scheduled, so we are on track to, to surpass that, that 104 from last year. We have also been working with state and, and national collaborators on implementation of the Zero Suicide Framework of systems change to affect suicide numbers. And we have specifically had some, some grants and some activities to build awareness and, and leadership efforts in, in our health systems, and enhance continuous quality improvement, and offer a variety of evidence-based trainings within not only the community, but with, in the health systems in the community as well. And as you may know, 988 expansion efforts are underway, and expected to go live in July 2020. So again, I invite the, the whole community to, to know the signs of suicide, to increase your, your awareness, and to know the, the resources and what you can do to support yourself or a friend or relative in need. There are several ways that you can get involved in the Community Health Improvement Plan, or upcoming events around Suicide Prevention Month. Thank you.
Okay, Doctor, there's a comment or question from Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, so just briefly, we do have a couple of events coming up, one is tomorrow and one is Saturday. Can you just briefly highlight those for everyone if they'd like to get involved?
Absolutely. The Party for Prevention is coming up tomorrow, and this is a fun event, but really brings people together around this important cause, to raise funds and, and raise awareness, as well as the Suspenders for Hope Walk Run that's happening this Saturday at Wichita State. So you could go to the Suspenders for Hope Walk Run, and then hit Zuba Lee later that day.
Right, thank you, and if anybody wants to, or needs help to find those, just reach out to me, I'm happy to send you in the right direction. Thank you so much for being here, this is an important topic to continue to discuss. One life lost is too many, and it's, you know, we meet Friday mornings once a month at 8:00 AM, and there's a pretty good group of us. How many, how many are on the, the Coalition, would you say?
Oh goodness, not everybody can come every month. We usually get probably 20 or so.
Yeah.
But I would assume we have at least twice that many that are involved in some way.
Well, thank you so much for being here, appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Thank you Doctor Nicole, appreciate all the work you do. All right, I don't see any other comments, so I'll make a motion to receive and file the report from Dr. Claus.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, Presentation on the Input Received from the Community Needs Assessment Related to the American Rescue Plan Act.
Good morning Brent.
Good morning Chairman Meitzner, good morning Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. Before I begin the presentation, a couple of housekeeping, you're getting a couple of handouts. The first one is the PowerPoint presentation that we'll be walking through, and then the second is the ARPA Needs Assessment Executive Summary, and this will substitute the one that was included in your Commission Agenda Packet. There's been a slight change for some clarification on item seven on the fourth page, and I'll get into more detail about that when I get to that. Commissioners, as you are aware, Sedgwick County received $50 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds, will be receiving another $50 million after the first of the year. This is part of a $350 billion allocation to state and local governments across the country, which is part of a $1.9 trillion federal act. I mention those numbers because while $100 million is a lot of money, it's a I mention those numbers because while $100 million is a lot of money, it's a small piece of a much larger pie. And so to assure that we are effective and that we're open and transparent in how we allocate and utilize these funds within the community, we've embarked on some processes and methods of gaining information from the community about how to best utilize these So what have we done so far? We've conducted an internal needs assessment, an external needs assessment. We've conducted some focus groups, and we're going to talk this morning about an ongoing needs assessment that's being added to the county's website, as well as an update on where we are with the Community Navigator Program that we've mentioned a couple of times in the past. Again, there is a need to be strategic, a need to be effective with the resources because of the fact that there are so many opportunities out there that overlap. The Internal Needs Assessment was completed earlier this year, and from that, you did develop and approve a spending plan for about $38 million. As we're going through that process, now we're standing up process documents so that departments and divisions that are accessing those funds for internal needs can go through the same process so that we can maintain consistency and compliance with the federal guidelines. But more of the focus this morning is on what we have done to reach out to the community and determine needs that might be out there. So the first thing that we did was conducted an external needs assessment. Between May 20th and June 30th, the county website was open for people to log on and provide us with information about how we might best utilize the ARPA dollars that have been entrusted to Suchwick County. We received just shy of 1,500 responses. We did collect some demographic information about the folks, and we found that two-thirds of them had lived in the county for over 20 years. 87% of our respondents were currently employed in Suchwick County. We also found that 40% were working professionals in the healthcare sector, IT, legal services, and other areas, and 40% of the households that responded had at least one to three children living in the home. Now, the methodology that was used for the needs assessment, external needs assessment, was a list of 15 different ARPA-eligible expenditure categories. And from that list of 15 eligible categories, we asked respondents to prioritize the top six, give us their number-one priority, their number-two, their number-three, so forth, until we compiled the data that told us how many times a given eligibility funding area was selected, number-one, number-two. We compiled all that information together so that we could determine if an item was chosen. The most often, it was the top number-one priority, but maybe it was number-two in some other. So we aggregated all that information so we could not only get those that were listed number-one, but those that were listed most often, and kind of put some weight to where they ranked in the top six. From that, the respondents gave us four top priorities for county utilization of the ARPA dollars. And the first one was to provide assistance to small businesses and nonprofits to help them reopen and stay open safely to serve the residents of Suchwick County. That received 947 prioritization responses. The second thing that we heard from the respondents was to fund programs that address community violence intervention, homelessness, affordable housing development, housing counseling, and/or lead remediation. So it was kind of a way to address public safety issues through homelessness or addressing homelessness or housing insecurity issues. The third of the top four, with 834 responses, was to offer mental health care services to vulnerable populations. And fourth, with 766 responses, to provide funds to hospitals, cities, schools, childcare providers, and other businesses that provide essential services for premium pay or for hazard pay for those that are employed in providing essential services. Now, in addition to these top four, we found that, just quickly in order, the priority, financial assistance to households that have been affected by COVID that have no other resources was number-five. Medical, mental health, and substance abuse treatment was number-six. So we see mental health appearing a couple of times in the top prioritizations. Ensuring county services and offices remain open. And then to round out the list, expanding early learning services, improving broadband, improving ventilation systems in public buildings, foster care services, expanding COVID-19 vaccination and testing programs, assisting licensed childcare facilities, assistance to our service industry, travel and tourism, and then finally, to continue to purchase and distribute personal protective equipment. Once the needs, the External Needs Assessment closed on June 30th, we then moved into a second phase to get more in-depth information about these prioritization, these areas that had been prioritized. So six focus groups were convened. They were convened in the areas that you see listed on here in terms of our service industries, dealing with arts, travel, tourism. There was a focus group specifically dealing with community health, economic development, business, workforce development, and you can see through the list, education, youth, and childcare. Now, these four focus groups were all centered around subgroups of residents and community leaders that are part of a greater COVID-19 task force. This task force has been around for over a year and a half now, dealing with the pandemic response, dealing with now pandemic recovery, and these subgroups are focused on how do we go after additional ARPA dollars or other funding that might be available to help the local economy recover, to help people get back into the workforce, to access some of these other resources. So we did those focus groups around those groups, people that are the chairs of those subcommittees with this overall community-wide task force, then reached out into their sphere of influence, their peer group, and invited other experts within these sectors to come and visit about what are they seeing, what are the impediments or the barriers to recovery? Where are we currently in terms of these sectors in dealing with the pandemic? We added another section specifically for local governments and invited all of the cities in Suchwick County to attend that. The cities in the county received a collective $12 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds. We wanted to determine what they might be planning to do with those funds, how we might participate with them. And then for folks that couldn't make it, there was a final session, a catch-all or repotry session, to find out, for people that couldn't make earlier sessions to which they may have been invited. When these focus groups were convened, they lasted for approximately 90 minutes. We had groups ranging from a little under 10 up to 20, 25 people in the focus groups. Each one of the focus groups, regardless of sector, was asked the same six questions around which dialogue was stimulated, and people were then providing information about where they are and their plans and so forth, and the opportunities that they see with county ARPA dollars or other ARPA-related funding. So to briefly speak to the questions that they were asked, they were asked first, where do you believe your organization, your business, your community group is in the COVID recovery process today? Are you behind where you were when the pandemic started? Have you fully recovered? Where are you on that spectrum? And then based on that response, what are your immediate needs? What do you need today to sustain efforts that you're undergoing? And then the third question, what sort of strategic planning might you be doing? How are you preparing for the next 24, 36 months going forward? We also wanted to know if their assessments included securing funds for multiple resources. There were nonprofit groups there that looked to other funding sources as well as businesses there. What were they going, what were they considering in terms of accessing funds to deal with the pandemic? They were asked specifically, how would ARPA funding help address actors? The number-one challenge that was, it was number-one in all the groups were workforce challenges. The need to attract new skilled workers. Employees are now demanding higher pay and benefits, the ability to work remotely. The workforce changed dramatically during the pandemic, and employers were talking about needing additional technology and training. Talked about competition between the retail sector and the manufacturing sector now for the same pool of employees. Childcare Services was listed as a top priority or a result across all of the focus groups as well. And they addressed this from a couple of different areas. One was the access to childcare services, as well as the inability of childcare providers to get relicensed or reopen after the effects of the pandemic. A barrier's been created, we were told, by regulatory requirements for new workers to pass criminal background checks as they're re-entering the workforce in the childcare area. Fire marshals are experiencing delays in conducting reopening inspections, and so we've got a one-to-three-month delay in getting facilities reopened, as well as getting people hired to work there.
Hey Brent, can I ask?
Yeah.
Is it all right if we ask along the way here?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I get it, all the challenges to get relicensed and reopen. So what related to ARPA funding can we do to help assist this? We don't know for sure.
Well, there are some things, and that's, we're kind of still gathering data, and that's one of the things we'll speak to in just a little bit.
Okay.
But to the extent that we have an effect or an adverse effect from ARPA, that funding for, for instance, childcare services would make sense, then we could funnel money there.
Okay.
We're seeing that the childcare, I think, we've got community partners involved in childcare that are accessing ARPA dollars outside of our direct allocation. So there's some ARPA money flowing to them that's not flowing through the county first.
Okay.
And then I guess that was to the earlier point. There's so many opportunities, we've got to fill the gaps, if you will, in what's not available in other places.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for letting me interrupt.
You bet. Another thing that, with the childcare services that they were finding was that non-traditional hours of childcare, evenings and weekends, are very scarce, and this is primarily being used by healthcare workers. So we've got people that are trying to provide healthcare services but can't because of a lack of childcare during those second and third shift hours. So it adds to that workforce challenge. If we look at the third and fourth one, in terms of finding the best ARPA funding, it kind of goes to what we have mentioned. What is the best avenue to go through? What's the best funding source to operate some of these things? And to the extent that small businesses or small nonprofit organizations seek this money maybe outside the county allocation, could the county assist them in the application process or the monitoring process? So maybe not providing funds, but providing technical assistance was something that came up in that discussion. Expanding available mental health services. There was a perception that as schools reopen, that it would be more behavioral health or mental health issues that would be identified or exacerbated within our schools, as well as within families that have dealt with, maybe they've suffered the loss of a family member due to the pandemic, the incidence of domestic violence. We've seen data that indicates that that's increased. Folks may be evicted because they haven't been able to pay rent, and eviction moratorium has expired. So there were different things that mental health services could be used to deal with some of these additional problems that we're going to be seeing. Testing and vaccination efforts, and specifically vaccination efforts, were something that most of the folks in the focus groups were very supportive of. They would like to get the county average up to about 70% or more of all eligible folks be vaccinated. They were looking forward to vaccinations being made available to children between the ages of two and 12. A theme was that the recovery isn't going to fully happen until we get enough vaccinations so that we get to that level where we're not worried about continued infections and so forth. But getting that vaccination level up was something that they were all pretty much supportive of and supportive of the county's efforts to improve that in that area. And then finally, that was specific to local government. And this is the change to the executive summary that you have on the fourth page on item number seven. It speaks to cooperation between the county and the cities in the county in terms of them being able to fund infrastructure projects. And they've mentioned broadband, but of the five cities outside the city of Wichita that participated in the focus group, water and sewer projects, which are specifically identified in the American Rescue Plan Act, were items where they would like to have county participation as well, because they may have gotten a tranche of money, but it's not enough to take on that size of an infrastructure project. So cooperation or collaboration with the county in these infrastructure projects would be something that they were interested in. Any questions about the focus groups? I mean, I was, gave you a very broad brush of what happened in those six groups between July 20th and July 29th.
Very good. Thank you for that.
If no questions on that, let's move into then where we're headed in terms of continuing to gather data. We will be adding to the ARPA funding link on the county's website at suchwickcounty.org, an ongoing needs assessment. We want to continue hearing from individuals, from businesses, from nonprofits about what barriers they're encountering, what opportunities they see, what do they need to help with continued recovery. Now, I would add that in order to be strictly compliant with federal regulations and the federal guidance, this is an anonymous survey. If a nonprofit was to come to us with a really tremendous opportunity, we're not going to know who that nonprofit is when they fill out this survey, because we wouldn't want to exclude them from being able to participate in providing that service. Individuals can respond anonymously, as well as businesses. We want frank, open information about those barriers, those opportunities, and so forth. This will be going up before the end of the week. It's about a four-page needs assessment, but everybody doesn't have to go through all four pages. They pick the ones that are specific to them, whether it's an individual, it'll open up the individual questions and so forth.
Hey Brent, wait a second. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. With this needs assessment, I really want to avoid the issues that we had around folks With this needs assessment, I really want to avoid the issues that we had around folks thinking they were going to get a certain amount of money and then didn't. And I get it that this is the step before that, but I want to make sure that people understand reporting requirements, what all information they're going to have to provide. I mean, I think, how, how do we ensure clear communication around expectations for receiving funds?
I think we're planning to do a few things in that arena. One is if a program was identified and then award was made to an agency. At the time that that, maybe that request for proposal goes out, or that notice of funding opportunity goes out, we will invite people to come in that would wish to participate in that grant program and hear about the requirements. Here are the reporting requirements. You're going to have to provide us with outputs, with outcomes. How many people did you serve and what were the outcomes as a result of that? What are those performance measures? Were you successful? What sorts of reporting requirements are going to be there for that specific opportunity? So if someone, and it's been suggested by our consultants, if an organization, an individual or business does not attend that meeting, they're not going to be eligible to participate in responding to that request for proposal.
Do we expect requirements to change?
They've not been set yet, Commissioner, so absolutely, I'm sure they will.
Okay.
And that's another thing that, as you agreed to a couple of weeks ago, to extend the timeline before we begin making these opportunities available, we want to get final guidance so that we can provide final guidance and final information to folks that might wish to participate in these opportunities.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row to avoid all of the issues and concerns that we had with our CARES funds dispersment. I know that we'll do that, but if we could put every single possible stopgap in there that we have at our disposal, I hope we do that.
Believe me, I lost hair over that one. It's, it is something that we definitely want to focus on as we go through the next, the next round. And that's one of the things with CARES, under such a tight timeframe to get funds out and dealing with ever-changing guidance, those things were bound to happen. And we did hear some comments about that in the focus groups, that that changing guidance was a frustration for folks. So we want to do everything we can to avoid that. This just shows the link to the ongoing needs assessment at cedriccounty.org. It'll be under the ARPA funding block that's on the homepage of the county's website. One of the other things that we will put on this federal ARPA funds link is a connection to how to get ahold of community navigators once that program gets stood up. And so let's talk a little bit about where we are in that process at this time. Just as a reminder, $500,000 was allocated to community navigators in the spending plan that you recently adopted. As we've discussed, and it's, yes, sir?
Commissioner Cruz has another question.
I'm sorry to interrupt you again. So on the ongoing needs assessment, can we go back one more page? So the ARPA funds, and it mentions right under there, click here to see the latest information on 100 million. So I just want to be clear and, and help everyone understand that even though we are receiving 100 million, we're receiving one chunk one year and one chunk the next year. 38 million of it, we've already sort of allocated. And so that isn't necessarily money that will be available to community organizations and the like. So is that going to be clearly communicated as far as what our spending, spending plan already outlines?
Yes, in fact, Commissioner, the spending plan that you've adopted is currently on this site.
Right there, okay.
So people can see what's been allocated or committed by the commission. And then as we provide reporting to the federal government, that will go on here as well. So it's fully transparent, the reports that we, how we've spent the money on a monthly basis and our quarterly performance measures and so forth. All of that will be made available to the public. So that'll be the one, one-stop shop, if you will, for finding that information out, as well as then that information about community navigators, how to begin to access them. So as we mentioned before, community navigators, simple terms, connect needs with resources. And here's just a list of possible needs, opportunities, things that we've heard through the needs assessment and from the focus groups. The community navigators could assist folks in making those connections to those resources. And to your earlier point, Commissioner Cruz, the request for proposal is, in its final iterations, we're waiting on some information from one of the consultants that will speak specifically to requirements about reporting. And once we get that put together, I think that we will have this ready to go out on the street next week. How are we going to award this, the community navigator program? It'll be based on an organization's ability and demonstrated ability with managing grants. Have they experienced in dealing with federal uniform guidance in the past? Do they know about community resources? We're putting some specific language in this about marketing abilities and the types of marketing efforts that they plan to employ to reach certain census tracts and certain underserved populations. We want to see how they've reported in the past. Have they demonstrated an ability to report on both outputs and outcomes? Because we need to know if this allocation of funding is, if they're making connections, that's an output. If those connections result in people getting employed or getting the, the access to the resources they need, those are the outcomes that we need to know about. Do they collaborate with other community partners? And how have they in the past, or how do they demonstrate to us the ability to connect with those adversely affected populations, historically underserved populations, which is a specific goal of the, of the ARPA funds? So that concludes my prepared comments. I'll answer any questions, and then I would recommend that you receive and file.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, so I'm on this ARPA page right now, and this needs assessment executive summary, will that be placed on there?
We certainly can. These are all public documents.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see that. And then where is, okay, so, yeah, I think I just need a little, spend a little time on this page.
Okay.
I, I appreciate this going up, but I would like to have this out here. I don't see it on here as of yet, so we could put that out.
Yeah, we want to present it to you before making it available on the website.
Thank you so much.
Okay Brent, thank you. Any other questions? Appreciate the update. I know the public appreciates it, so.
Okay.
But we're still going to be taking input, I see on that one slide. So although we've kind of officially cut it off, but we're still taking, or not officially cut it off, but we've put a little bit of a, of a Gantt chart timeframe ending, but we still take opinions. If, if any of the commissioners get a question, we can refer them to the website.
Correct, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
And it's an evolving, ongoing process, so as we.
Right.
Gather more information, you'll hear from us again.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I'll make a motion to receive and file Brent's report on.
Second.
There's a motion in a section, or a second, to receive and file the needs assessment as of today. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks again, Brent. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, resolution creating new Cedric County personnel policies and procedures.
Commissioners, while Sheena is going to the podium, we're going to discuss under item I, the concept of bonus pay that we had talked about a few months ago, and the commission had, to date, allocated a pool of 15 million to consider for that usage. Lindsay and Sheena and their staffs have put in considerable time over the last six to eight weeks modeling what this could look like. And I think this is an opportunity today to have Sheena talk through what that modeling looks like and get you some numbers and look for further direction on what the commission wants to do regarding this item. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good morning, Sheena.
Good morning. Today, we want to provide you information on the American Rescue Plan Act, commonly referred to as ARPA, specifically addressing the premium pay for our Cedric County employees. Today, we are presenting you with a policy that outlines premium pay for essential eligible employees. We have two objectives for today, the first being the approval of the allocation of the funds, and the second is the direction or approval of the methodology for administering the program. But just a few definitions pertaining to the policy in the U.S. Treasury guidance. An eligible worker is a worker needed to maintain the continuity of operations of essential, critical infrastructure sectors and additional sectors as each governor of a state or territory, or each tribal government may designate as critical to protect the health and well-being of the residents of their state. Essential work is work involving regular in-person interactions or regular physical handling of items that were also handled by others. Cedric County is looking at the premium pay from March 13th, 2020 through March 24th, 2021. The purpose is to provide essential workers some level of relief due to the higher levels of exposure during this period. The Division of Finance coordinated information for departments to submit paperwork attesting to all applicable working times for those eligible workers. Departments and/or employees must be able to provide backup information for all hours submitted for review for the premium payments. As we briefed the commission last week on the information we received today, we provided three options for the commission to review. And I have given you a handout just as a, as a reference for what those premium pay options would be. The first option is to focus on categories 1A and 1B employees and remain within the 15 million allocation. Option two is to fully fund both categories and increase the premium pay from 15 million to 20 million. Or the third option is to fund both categories within the $15 million allocation and reduce the cap and the hourly rates. Currently, HR is reviewing information provided by the departments. At this moment, we're reviewing job descriptions to ensure that those positions have been properly placed within the tiers. We have been asked to present this information back to the commission, and we plan to do so by next week. There are many moving parts to this process, and we want to emphasize that premium pay is for current employees. Employees must remain employed with Cedric County as the, on the last day of the final pay period prior to the pay date. While reviewing all the submissions, our focus has been on Tier 1A, those that were required to be onsite 100% of the time and with higher levels of exposure to the public. Based on some questionable data, we want to make sure that we review all of that information before we move forward. In addition, employees will also have the option to opt out of premium payments. They will be notified of any potential premium pay, payment, and further communication will go out on E-line. So we would like to get further direction from you again on our two objectives for today is the fund allocation and the methodology for approving the premium pay.
Okay, thank you, Sheena. I know there's been considerable efforts on this, and we've all been talked to and able, individually, so we could have our input. So we're asking for a decision if we can today because of timeline, I see, to get these out, the premium pay. So, you know, to me, it's kind of a, under premium pay options, there's a decision between option two, which increases 15 to 20 million, so after taxes is approximately 3,000, or option three is we stay with the original thought of the 15 million and to everybody, I mean, that's eligible. And then that after-tax number would be, looks like 2,400, according to the, so I do lean towards helping everybody that we can that was involved in this, all of our employees that were eligible versus just, just the category one, because the category two people did have some exposure while onsite or even exposure while offsite. So that's where I lean, so I just take the, take the lead in telling you, I'm kind of okay with option two, but maybe option three might be, is still a, a nice bonus pay for this critical pay or, or the premium pay under the rules of the ARPA that was set out. So thank you for explaining this. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Sheena, could you give us a breakdown of how many employees are eligible in option one versus option two?
Option one includes 1,318 employees in category one, 1A, that would be 1,035, and then 283 in 1B.
And category two?
And, let's see. Give me just one second, I will get that information back.
I think it was like 2,100 the last.
Tw- yes, 2,193. I couldn't find the number quick enough.
I have to agree with Chairman on option two. I feel that when we increase it to option, or to the second category, we're going to hit more employees. And I feel like in order to give the maximum benefit allowable, considering these funds are to be used for COVID recovery and COVID in general, I would lean towards option two. I want to, I want to make sure that the majority of our employees who are eligible, eligible to receive these funds have an opportunity to, and show them exactly how important they are by putting our money where our, you know, where our mouth is. So that's, that's kind of where I'm leaning, and thanks for the opportunity.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you so much. Since I first started here, which is what, like eight months or so at this point, that's the, that's the one thing I hear repeatedly is, what can we do for the staff at the county? How can we raise morale? What can we do to show them they're valued, especially after last year and, and everything that, you know, that you guys have gone through? And so I do think it's really important that we, we do that and we show just how much, you know, we do value all the work that gets done here. And so I, I'm completely in favor of option two, raising it to 20 million if that's what it's going to need, so that way everybody who's eligible can receive that and receive the maximum amount that they're allotted here. So I, I am in favor of option two, and I hope that we can get that passed today, because I do think it's really important to show how much we value them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I am, I am curious, so the dates that we're looking at right here, those were defined by the program. The federal government picked those dates, or is that based on our, the dates of our local health order?
That's correct, our local health order, yes.
If we have a local health order in the future, does this open that back up again in the future? If, if there's a, if we wanted to spend additional funds in the future, if there ever was another order going forward, does that open back up again?
I think that's a fair assessment, yes.
Okay, good. I'm glad to know that. Thank you. How was the $15 million estimate determined initially?
That was the allocation that was approved by the commission. I don't know, Lindsay, if you have more details on how the 15 million was originated.
Good morning, Lindsay.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Poreso, you're CFO. So we actually were looking at the grand total allocation awarded to the county of 100 million. We looked at what was produced through the internal needs assessment in terms of number of employees who departments said that were eligible. We also looked, if you recall. We also looked, if you recall, last year, we did hero pay or COVID stipends. And so, we looked at some of those numbers. We originally had thought about 10 million, but then realized that full payroll taxes wouldn't be necessary to be paid on all of that. And so, in order to increase the amount that was available to employees, we increased that to 15 million, with that covering also the payroll taxes that were required to pay. Does that answer the question?
I guess my, my, because my question would be, which employees do we consider in that? So, when you, when you calculated that, you said hero pay, but for example, EMTs didn't get hero pay, for example. So, I'm just curious, this includes things like attorneys, for example, people in offices, for example. So, were they thought of when the $15 million earmark was, was calculated?
Yes, sir. So, what we, the hero pay is actually not the critical pay that has been given this year. These were those $200 or $100 per paycheck stipends that were given mid-last year around the same time that we were doing furloughs. And so, actually, EMTs did, were eligible to receive that funding. So, we had about 1,390 employees who received COVID stipends. We knew that not all of those folks were still with the county, and we did know that some additional folks who had the opportunity to do some telework but also had to be onsite to do some work were also part of that pool because we were having conversations with the courts about backlog, the district attorney's office, all of, all of those folks. And so, when we were trying to come up with an estimate, it was a part of that bigger conversation.
Okay. I, I also am in favor of option two, and I think that for, and the reason primarily is I think that, you know, employees have essentially been given an expectation, I think, that they, they've heard the word 10,000 has been, has been said around the county. So, anything less than that, in my opinion, is a bit of a bait and switch. I think it would create disappointment. I don't want that to happen. I think the one that we can do that, that gets to the greatest number of employees is option two. I think that's the right thing to do. So, I, I've already, I've heard other commissioners already speak. I don't know if it's appropriate right now or not, but I would, I'd like to make a motion that we would, we would approve option two at the appropriate time, Chairman. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. We still have another comment. Can I just briefly follow? Did, did we not, that is a, try to get my mind around the 15 million. Didn't we, in that first 38 million decision, that 15 was included in that, if you recall? Remember, we, we took a chunk of them and waited a week to come back on the, I think that was related to the floors and the moving of the facility. So, we did take formal action on the 15 million a couple of months ago as part of that 38 million, my recollection. Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, I guess I'm confused. Is there a motion on the floor? Because I haven't had a chance to speak at all.
I know, well, you made a motion.
At the appropriate time.
Oh, okay. Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, when Tom brought this to us initially, he said, hey, we had a lot of frontline workers, front-facing people like fire EMS, sheriff's department, and so forth, that were working last year because of, and they had to go out every single day, and the only protection we gave them was some PPE. We didn't have any vaccine. We didn't have any other way of protecting them. And, and those employees went out every day and did their job, and I thank them very much for that, and I, I sincerely appreciate that. We had a lot of other employees that were sitting behind Plexiglas or working from home, and yet they're going to be eligible for this, the same as, as people that were frontline, wearing a mask that may or may not work for them, and, and some gloves and, and maybe some other PPE. And at the time when Tom brought that to us, while we were talking about $10 million, and I was fine with that because I, I want to make sure that we recognize those frontline employees that are doing their job each and every day. Well, remember a year ago, I got, we got to stay with what our history is. A year ago, we had thousands of people here in Cedric County that didn't have a job. And I'll just relate one email that I received from an individual. He'd been laid off as an aircraft employee, and he needed a knee replacement, but he lost his health insurance at that point in time. And as a result, he couldn't get his knee replaced. Let me tell you about another individual that I talked to. He owned a very small business downtown, and he had three employees. He wasn't deemed essential. And as a result of that not being deemed essential, he had to lay off his three employees and close his business, while we had Walmart and Lowe's and Home Depot and all these supposedly essential businesses open. But that individual that had to have his knee replacement, we still required him to pay his property tax, and that property tax was going to pay the salaries of all these employees that we have here. That small business owner, just one out of hundreds that closed, was still required to pay his property tax, and he sent that property tax into us diligently, and that paid the salaries of all these employees that still had a job. So, my point is that we had thousands of people that were deeply infected by this, that lost their jobs, that had no income, that were still required to pay, did not have health insurance, had no other benefits. But we had employees here at Cedric County, and I love our employees here at Cedric County, and I'm not speaking against them. What I'm trying to point out is the difference is that each and every one of our employees here in Cedric County still had a job, still had a paycheck, could still pay their property tax that we were collecting. If they needed to have a knee replacement, they could go and get a knee replacement because they still hadn't health insurance. So, I just listened to Brent give us a complete briefing on things that external and internal needs assessment. I, I listened to Akeem when he started the meeting today and said, hey, we have, we implemented Q-list. Oh, that's fantastic. We have implemented Q-list, but we still got an hour or so to wait, and we're not solving that problem. We have a ton of things that are on this external and internal survey, things like broadband. Schools were closed last year, and what we learned from that was that broadband is critical. But are we spending any money for broadband? No. So, I am very, very, very concerned that the public, first of all, this is the first real public meeting that we've discussed this, and we just came out of a three-day weekend. So, I don't know how many even saw what our agenda is for today or even understood what's going to be discussed. And yet, we're going to vote on maybe putting $20 million towards bonus pay for employees that had a job all during the pandemic, that had health insurance and so forth. I don't know if the public is ready to weigh in. I didn't receive any emails because they didn't know about this. The other thing that concerns me is that way back when we had our last en banc, at that point in time, I asked to have another en banc so that we could work with all of the different agencies and find out the, what the best way of, of supporting our community. And that's where I'm at, is supporting our community, making sure that we're providing the, the services that we need to protect the community as we move forward. Some of the employees that are going to get these bonuses are going to retire this year. And I, I appreciate what they did, but it's not going to help us as we move forward. So, I honestly think that we're premature on this. I think we need the community to weigh in on this. I think we need another en banc. I've heard rumors that we may be going to have another en banc later this month. So, I, I truly, I don't want to kill this. I want to make sure that we do what's right for the community. And in order to know what's right for the community, we need the community involved. And we're just going to suddenly just decide that 40% of the money that we got in our last $50 million, we're going to spend on something that's not really going to benefit the community. It is going to benefit our, our employees, but the community as a whole is not going to get any benefit from it except maybe some sales tax money when they go spend the bonus. So, I think we're premature on bringing this forward. I think that we need the community to weigh in, and because of the scheduling, we stuck it right after a three-day weekend. Now is not the time for us to be making this decision until we get the community input. So, I truly think that we need to defer this decision. I don't want to kill it because I, as I said, back when we first presented and we were going to give it to frontline workers, I was all for that. Now, we're going to give it to lawyers, and nothing against lawyers, okay? Because I'll get bad emails. But people that were working from home, people who were protected, people that weren't frontline, and I think that we need to wait until after the en banc and see what the entire community wants us to do. So, my preference would be to defer this, and if I need to make a motion to defer, I am willing to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Howell, I think you were next.
All right. Well, thank you, Chairman. Just, just because I, my memory is not perfect, I'd like to know, I actually think we have, I think we have discussed this publicly, at least in passing. I'm not sure how much discussion has been made, but is there any recollection by a manager or Sheena that, can you, can you confirm that we've had some discussion on this publicly?
We've talked about a premium payment. We haven't necessarily talked about the methodology.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And just to understand, clarifying question here. We're intending to provide, if you're a 1A classification employee, that you would get two payments of $5,000 minus taxes, which we anticipate would be a, a 40% withholding rate. So, you would get $3,000 in your paycheck, in that paycheck for this, for this bonus. And again, when they settle up with the, with IRS, when they file their taxes, they may get part of that back. That's, that's how that would work, right?
Correct.
So, our intent is to give them $10,000 over two payments. Of course, whatever tax liabilities they have at the end of the, when they file, that would be what they, they would have to pay taxes on that amount, of course.
Correct. And so, what we would do would be, we would add an hourly amount to their wage of up to $12 and cap that at 10,000.
Okay. And so, I, so just as a couple of points, I, I don't know if Commissioner Dennis would clarify or not, but is he supportive of the $15 million proposal, either option one or option three today? And option two, you want to hold off on? I'd like to know what his thought is on that.
Do you want to comment?
That's all right. Well, I have other questions and comments.
Okay, go ahead. Okay. I'm sorry.
I'm for deferring it today until after we hear from the public.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying. The difference from options one and three versus option two is, is a 5% difference in the allotment from the government. So, $15 million would be the same amount of money to, to fund option one or option three. The difference from option one to option three is the number of employees receiving some, some of that, some of that revenue. Option two is a larger pool of employees, but it requires a $5 million, a $5 million increase in, in funding from this $100 million allotment we have from the government. If you are a 2B employee, they would get a $5 an hour bump. Do they still get potentially $10,000? Are they limited to an appropriate commensary?
They would be capped at 10,000 as well, but because that number is lower, that $5 is lower, it would probably be harder for them to reach that cap amount.
So, it wouldn't, so they wouldn't necessarily be, you know, I didn't quite understand exactly how that works. Let's clarify. So, again, that $5 an hour is 40, is 41% of $12 an hour.
Mm-hmm.
So, they wouldn't just receive 41% of this, of the $10,000. They wouldn't receive $4,100.
That's correct. It would, it would be based on $5, just the $5 amount.
But they wouldn't be capped at $4,100. It'd be capped at still at the 10,000.
They would still cap at 10, yes.
Okay. All right. If someone had zero risk for COVID, they, they did work from home this entire time, during that period of time, would they receive any funding in this proposal?
No. So, the hours that someone teleworked would not be eligible. So, we ask the departments and of course, and the employees as well, if they were in a hybrid model or if they completely teleworked, those would not be eligible. But the hours that they teleworked from home, they would not be eligible for this premium payment. So, it's only actual hours worked onsite. And, and I might add, just for clarification from where we were at last week, HR is going through, and we're reviewing that information right now to make sure that that is accurate.
Okay. I don't personally have any problem with moving forward today. I think that this, this would be helpful to the employees to have it sooner than later. If we were to wait, I don't know how long we would wait, but I don't know that it substantially changes what our plan is. I think that at least several commissioners have spoken in favor of option two. I've heard them speak today. I feel comfortable moving forward. I would be glad to make a motion again. I don't know if that's appropriate right now or not, but I, you know, generally, we respect each other with, with respect to deferrals, but I'm not quite sure what the deferral is for unless it's waiting for an en banc, which right now is not scheduled. And again, this was in our agenda, it was outlined in our agenda last Friday when the, when the agenda was published to the public. So, this is the way we do business every week. Most agenda items are published on Fridays, and the public has from Friday through Wednesday to respond. They could be here today, and they could also email us or whatever. And so, to the extent they've not responded, I don't know that there's a concern by the public. But in terms of the en banc, I'm not sure what we would do with the en banc that would actually cause this to be a different proposal. So, I'm ready to make a motion, but again, I would like to hear other comments. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, supporting our employees doesn't necessarily mean that we aren't supporting the community. I think it means that we're stepping up and showing our employees how important they are. We were and are a responding agency in the community. We never shut down. We're losing employees like crazy. The stress of this work and being on point 24 hours a day sometimes is, is a lot, and we're losing employees. We completely shifted, use the word of 2020, of 2020. We pivoted. We did that constantly over the last 18, almost 19 months now. And so, I would not be in favor of deferring this. I know that we do that on occasion when commissioners want to defer, but I think this is a very important step to take for the employees, and I'm, I am willing and confident in my decision that this is the right move that we make with this money. And I just wonder, is there an actual motion on the floor?
Mike, was there a, originally when, when Commissioner Howell said, I'll make the motion? I don't know if you-
I would be glad to make a motion. When the comments are done, I just think it's inappropriate to make a motion prior to all the comments coming out. That's all.
It's not been made officially yet.
Okay, sounds good.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. So, I would agree. I think supporting our staff is supporting our community because at the end of the day, our staff is the one who's out in our community, serving those individuals. And so, if we don't retain them and if we're not supporting them to the best of our ability, then I do think that hurts the community and not just internally what our staff, you know, I'm sure would feel like if we did not do this. And we had already allocated 15 million, correct?
Yes.
So, this is just adding five more. It's not the whole 20 million that we're trying to allocate today. Is that correct?
That's correct. 15 has already been allocated. We would just adjust your spending plan an additional five.
Okay. And I do agree that broadband is crucial, that we prioritize that. So, I am completely on board with that and would love to see potentially what we could do next year when we get the second half of this money and then with the infrastructure bill that's coming along as well. I think that is something that we need to prioritize and make sure that we're doing everything we can to ensure that that's funded. But I, yeah, I do think that it's supporting our community by supporting our staff. If we continue to lose staff at the rate we have been, then we won't be able to offer the services that we do now, and they would be severely lacking in many ways. So, I, I think this is the right move to go today. If it was the full 20 million and we hadn't had this conversation before, I would be, you know, more understanding of diverting it. But we have talked about this, and we have already allocated the 15, so I'm comfortable moving with five more and, and really showing, like I said, how much we value our staff. And, and I want them to know that even if they weren't, you know, at a fire station or they're not a paramedic, I mean, they're still our staff and they still make this county run in the way it needs. So, I'm, I'm in favor of Jim's motion as well. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments, but I'll let you go first. Commissioner Dennis?
Just a couple of questions. First of all, Sheena, are we in a sprint or a marathon on this?
A little bit of both. Right now, with the number of, I guess, employees information that we've received, we truly want to focus on that 1A group, and we would, it would be imperative that we work quickly so that we can make our deadline. Tiers 1B, 2A, and 2B are something that we can take just a little bit more time, and by more time, I mean maybe just a couple of weeks, to ensure that we can go through that for accuracy and then we can apply those payments.
Well, I agree. I said initially and during my comments that I wanted to reward those that were frontline workers, that were out there every single day. workers, that were out there every single day with very little protection. So I've never had a problem with supporting those folks. That's why I'm curious about whether or not we're in a sprint or a marathon, because I don't see, if we need to do the 10 million in order to move forward on the frontline workers, I'm fine with that. I'm not fine with going beyond that because I think that we do need input. Mr. Papoun, I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If you recall, just the very last meeting, we had the Wichita Eagle saying that the county commissioners violated ethics because we hadn't filled out one little sheet of paper to say that Commissioner Cruz was on TCAM and I was on the zoo board and a couple of other commissioners were on boards. Even though every one of those appointments were made in a public meeting, we have minutes for those and so forth. So that seems to me to be kind of very trivial. Granted, the Eagle thought it was important, so it got a lot of press. But one of the other things that we were talking about during the ethics discussions was, is any of your decisions as a commissioner going to impact you financially or any of your relatives financially? Is that not correct?
Commissioner Dennis, I think that some of that was in a presentation by the woman that came down from Kansas City with BKD. I mean, the first part of your comments had to do with specific conflict of interest laws that the state of Kansas has for elected officials. And most of those laws deal with money that either you or your spouse would be getting from a...
What about children?
There's nothing in that about children. So this would be, you know, maybe under ARPA funding or just general conflict of law or conflict of interest principles that could come into play, but it doesn't come into play from the law, law that we're talking about, Kansas statutes.
So something where we don't fill out a piece of paper and it does go before the commission, that's a big deal and it goes to the Wichita Eagle and the fact that children of commissioners will be benefiting financially from any kind of decision that we make today, that's just fine and good?
I don't know how to respond to that, Commissioner. I mean, it gets into some issues that really aren't legal.
Oh, it amazes me. Well, I'll reiterate, if the vote is to provide $10 million to our first responders today and defer the rest of it until a future date after we have public input, I'm fine with that. If not, I'll have to make a motion in order to be able to defer this. And I've not seen since my time on the commission that we haven't approved a request to defer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can I make a couple of comments? Commissioner Howell for you. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to note that, repeating that, we did have conversations about the 15 million, and that was in a public hearing, along with a lot of other stuff. So, and I think we voted unanimously for 15 million. At the time, we didn't say 15 million part to one and not part to another and things like that. It was for instructing, if I recall, finance and HR to determine who would be eligible in, for part of this 15 million. I recollect myself that when I was first approached by this in a one-on-one type meetings between finance and maybe HR and Tom, that the ARPA rules, which is in the second paragraph of our handout, the ARPA rules allowed up to 25,000 per eligible worker. And not knowing exactly what that was going to be, well, I think it was going to end up taking up obviously much more. And so when we got it down to, let's say, what's 10,000, and we did the backwards math from there, so 10,000 per estimated employees at the time was going to be at least 10 million, maybe closer to 15 million. Is that recollection correct with you, Lindsay? Okay. So that's where 10,000 commitment out of 25,000 ARPA-eligible was clearly a reduction in what could have been promoted as 25,000. So that 10,000 per employee qualifies under ARPA, which equals the, well, originally the 15 million and now the request to improve to 20 million. My last comment is that I was just in a serious meeting about another topic with Sheriff Easter, and he made a comment to me on the side after our meeting that this, you know, we've talked about various departments that have had trouble. Obviously, com care and things like that have not discussed with com care, but Sheriff continues to bleed from his staff getting recruited and trying to keep staff and recruit staff. And he said this, this single item here would be a huge help for the sheriff's department on his jail. So I'm still, we need to do something immediately and forward-looking and for this, for our employees. And I know there's, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Dennis, but there has been public input and public, available for public input, and we've had availability to have discussions. And that's the backwards math of how we got to the 10,000 instead of 25,000. And then eligible employees was somewhere in the 15 million estimate. And then the reality is, what you've done here says 20 million is eligible to fall within this 10,000. So that's just my, my comments and the history of what I recollect. Commissioner Howell, I'm sure you were next.
Thank you, Chairman. I, just for clarification, commissioners are not going to get this, is that correct?
They haven't, we have not received any submissions from commissioners.
It's my intent that commissioners would not receive this. That's what I prefer. What about management, Tom's folks? Are you planning to receive this?
I will not, Commissioner.
Okay. I think that that needs to be clarified today. Thank you very much. I have a large family. Some folks have married into my family. I think it's inappropriate to keep attacking my family. They are firefighters, they are paramedics, they have worked in the Cedric County Jail, they've worked in the election office, and on it goes. And so the reality is, my family, they are adults, they are not me. They have the right to provide services to people of Cedric County and secure those jobs independently. In fact, on one of the, they applied for the jobs, I asked our counsel, is there any conflicts of interest? And they said no. At the end of the day, these are independent adults, and they provide services to Cedric County, just like everybody else, that they work alongside. And if there's money provided to them, then they should be eligible for that as well. I didn't create this program. The federal government created this program. I went and read about it, and it's very clear. People who are frontline, like firefighters and paramedics, that's exactly who, that's the number one audience this is intended for. So if you want me to, Commissioner Dennis, I'll recuse myself. But I don't think it's inappropriate, I don't think it's inappropriate that this commission considers this today, and I don't think it's a conflict of interest in any way. I am bothered greatly that you keep attacking my family. If another commissioner would like to make a motion, I would be glad to support that or recuse myself. If you, Commissioner, if counsel, if you think it's inappropriate for me to vote on this, I'd be glad to recuse myself. Just give me some clarity, please, on what I should do here today.
Commissioner Howell, I don't think it'd be inappropriate for you to go ahead and vote on it. Just because I think a commissioner has a family member working for the county does not bring them into the state conflict of interest laws. And I don't think a commissioner would have to recuse him or herself from voting on a budget or any other issue. You know, if it, if it only maybe directly and only applied to maybe your family member, you'd want to do that. But when it applies to a broad class of individuals that your family members are also a part of, I don't think that is considered a conflict of interest, so.
And based on your comments today, I'd be glad to vote on this, but I'll let somebody else make a motion. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, just a really quick, when we look at the categories, I mean, if we left off some of category two, there are people like com care workers in category two. I mean, can you explain what that, the people that are in that group that we would be leaving off if we didn't?
Sure. And maybe for those that are listening, I'll just go through all the categories so that way we can explain what those are. And category one, 1A, means that they are onsite 100% of the time and high level of exposures. Category 1B is onsite 100% of the time with a limited level of exposure. Category two is a hybrid remote work and also required to be onsite. 2A is that hybrid model with a high level of exposure onsite. And 2B would be the hybrid model with limited level of exposure while onsite.
Okay. I just think it's really important that all of our focus doesn't always go to the same departments because, I mean, our tag office, our clerk, our treasurer, facilities, corrections, com care, I mean, all of these departments are crucial to what we do. And if we only focus on some, I mean, what is that saying to the rest of these groups? That they were here, they were doing their jobs, and we need to, we need to recognize that they were here too and not just always, you know, going to fire and EMS. And while I think they're extremely important, obviously, but I just think it's important that we're not leaving off these other groups just because they're not those first responders necessarily. So I, I don't know if anybody else has it, but I would make a motion that we pass option two.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me clarify a couple of things. All I'm asking for is to delay this for one week so that we can have input from the public. I don't know what would be the problem with delaying for one week to see if there's any questions whatsoever before we move forward. Second thing I want to make sure that I clarify very carefully is that I have never attacked another commissioner's family. I was just questioning, we just received a briefing on ethics, and they talked about just the appearance of some kind of an ethical conflict is something that someone should recuse themselves for. So that was my only question. Repeated a couple of times, I was attacking a family, and absolutely that was not the case. I am just curious about the ethics involved in this. So since there is a motion and a second on, I would make a motion, a substitute motion to defer this for one week.
There's a substitute motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? I don't see a second. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Again, when we've asked for delays, typically it's because things are coming to us at the last minute. Let me reiterate once again, this was put out to the public last Friday, and nothing about this proposal has changed. So I don't understand why a delay would be warranted in this case. Number two, whether we approved option one or two or three, the difference is $5 million, and that $5 million has absolutely zero impact or effect on my family members, the firefighter and the paramedic. So I'm advocating today for a $5 million increase primarily for people who are in option 2A and 2B of this proposal today. Finally, we'll talk about conflicts of interest. I just verified with the counselor, this is not a conflict of interest, but I think receiving Zubile tickets is. I received two tickets for $150 each, I think, and I believe all five commissioners probably received those. I plan on turning my back in because I think that's a conflict of interest. I'd like to know, you know, if we're going to follow these ideas of conflicts of interest, we need to be serious about it. So I appreciate the offer of those tickets. But I think that when someone sits on that board, we appropriate nearly, you know, $8 million roughly to zoo operations, I think we need to clarify that that might be considered a conflict of interest. So once again, I don't think there's a conflict in this particular case. And what I'm advocating for is to, is to bring other employees in, have nothing to do with my family. Thank you.
Okay. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Commissioner Dennis?
Oh, thank you. I understand there, I did not get a second to my motion. I think that one week, I'm baffled that we can't wait one week. This sets a heck of a precedence because we've had, since I've been on the commission, 100% of the time when one commissioner asks for a deferral for a week or two weeks or a month even, it's been 100% of the time it's been approved. So I guess from this point forward, that's no longer applicable. I'm kind of saddened by that set of events. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to clarify that I have asked to defer things that have not been deferred, so this is not the first time, and it has not been, it has not been 100%. So if you need me to find the time that there were deferrals that I made, I'm happy to do that, but this is not the, this is not 100% of the time that it's been deferred. Thank you for allowing me that clarification.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. There's a motion and a second to go with option two. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Does option two include 20 or 15 million?
20 million.
This is the hardest vote that I've had in four years to be on the commission because I really, truly want to make sure that employees know how much I respect and what they did. I think what we're doing is wrong, but aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheena, for your, for your work in finance as well and other management and other teams, team managers of the departments. Okay. Next out, please, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to call, I'd like to make a motion to call an off-agenda item.
And second, there's a motion for an off-agenda item. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Normally, when you call for an off-agenda item, you need to explain the reason for the off-agenda item so we know what we're voting on.
Thank you for, thank you for correcting.
The off-agenda item will be called to discuss with Dr. Benz, who was only on the call until 10:45, but I'd like to still have a conversation about COVID and if he is still on there at all.
Dr. Benz, are you still there?
Yes.
There's a motion and a second for a discussion with Dr. Benz regarding COVID. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Joe, we're diverting your, your item till after this. Okay. So Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Benz, we'd just like to hear an update as far as our numbers, what you're seeing in the hospital system. It's important for us to understand that this is still going on, and we'd like to hear from our health official.
All right. Well, you may have these numbers available to you from the health department, but the weekend during September the 4th, we had 1,800 cases of COVID in our county, which is the highest number we've had probably since November, December of 2020, as compared to having 142 cases in the week of July 3rd. So as you can see, we've had a quantum leap in the number of cases and we're at a level we haven't seen for almost a year. We also are still running a positive test rate of around 8%. It fluctuates around eight. Some weeks it's a little over, some just under, but it's been consistent now at that level for the last five or six weeks. So the virus is still circulating in our community. It's still here. As you, you know, the hospital numbers, over 200 cases combined, the two hospitals combined are over 200 cases and a large number of people in the ICUs and on ventilators. So this Delta virus has proven to be a much more aggressive virus than the earlier original virus, and as a matter of fact, has displaced the original virus, where almost all the cases now are the Delta strain, which appears to be much more contagious. And there's still debate whether it's more dangerous or more fatal. We don't have enough evidence to say that, but we do know it's much more contagious. We are also seeing more kids in the hospitals, certainly not at the numbers we're seeing adults. adults. And of the adults, we're seeing people younger age groups than we did the first nine months of this illness in our city. So it, and as you've heard before, over 90% of the people who are in the hospital are unvaccinated. We are seeing a few breakthroughs, but most of those patients are having mild illnesses and not having severity that leads to death. The pediatric cases, they're not as sick as the adults, but some of them are ill, and we know a number of the chronic conditions this virus can lead to and affect the kids as well as adults. On a national level, I just happen to have the Wall Street Journal in front of me, says "Delta variant throttles job growth," and I can speak from experience at our own, my own institution, that this is having an impact on both the patients who get it and their contacts because they have to be taken out of circulation, they have to be put in quarantine. My own secretary is now in quarantine because of a contact. So I'm feeling the ramifications of this virus myself in my work. So that's the status of where we're at. The kids less than age 12 still have no access to a vaccine, and it's still unknown when that will be available. As you know, there is some, there's still debate going on. There's some who feel at the CDC we should go ahead and offer boosters of the Pfizer and Moderna vaccine in the middle of this month. I don't know that a final decision's been made. It seems like there's debate going on about that, but we'll hear more. We're staying tuned with where things are going. That is a brief overview of where we're at in this county, and it's reflected nationwide. It's not just this county. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Dr. Menz, for being here today. There is word across the nation of other variants. Can you speak to that?
Well, the CDC, as well as our own Department of Health in Topeka, is taking a random sample of all the isolates they get and are doing genotyping on those or mapping. And we are, there are other virus, there are lots of other variants. The newer variants that have come out, we don't know whether they're more contagious than Delta or not. This virus will continue to mutate. That's how this virus succeeds. It creates lots of mutations, and it just throws them out there to see which one is more potent than the last variant, and eventually that variant will take over. Now, I don't know whether the new variants we've seen since Delta, I don't think we have enough data to say they're likely to displace Delta. They certainly haven't shown that so far. But this virus, as long as it's replicating in people, is going to mutate, continue to mutate and develop variants almost at random, and it remains to be seen if any of those variants are more successful in infecting people than Delta is.
So, Dr. Menz, one, a couple more questions. At what point would, I mean, we have flu season upon us. Our hospital system is already pretty overmaxed. What would be a trigger point, whether it's positive test rates or lack of staff in hospital system, or what would be a trigger point that could enact further restrictive measures?
Well, I will leave it to the hospitals to decide when they are unable to take more patients. I think they're close to the point of turning down referrals from outside hospitals. I know many of the rural hospitals are struggling to find places to send their patients. I've never heard the hospitals declare a certain numerical point at which they would have to close the hospital to any admissions. Not me that would make that decision, that is themselves. I don't, I don't know that, we checked with KDHNE, there is nothing in their records that's ever determined when schools would have to close in terms of the number of cases in the city. I think their feeling is, the school should stay open as long as they have the staff to do that, but they know best how many staff they need to educate and take care of the operations at their schools. So I have no knowledge of what they say is they got to have how many staff, how many teachers before the schools have to close. In KDHNE, they've been asked if they have any numbers of cases in the city or in the schools that would lead to school closure, and they say they do not. That would be left up to the individual schools. As you know, I think it is time to seriously consider reinstituting the mask mandate. I think that is the least impactful upon employment, the least impactful on people being out of work, and it is the least, least measure that really inhibits people's activities. I don't have a set number in my head about when we would move to the restrictions we had in 2020. I would be very reluctant to do that, and frankly, you commissioners would have to decide whether you can accept that. I am very reluctant to return to what it was like in the first six months of this because of the impact it had on employment, our economy and everything. But, you know, at some point, if this thing doesn't calm down, I don't know. We'll have to make that decision together.
Yeah. Dr. Menz, thank you for being here. I know that you had a hard stop about 10 minutes ago, so I appreciate you hanging on to discuss this with us. I know this is not a popular topic. I get it that people are sick and tired of this virus. Also, the thought of masks, what happened the last time that we had a conversation about this? I get it, it's not, not anything anybody wants to talk about. But when I see our school system and when I hear my daughter telling me about all of her friends that are out sick, when I see reports of physicians exhausted beyond belief and all of our hospital system maxed out, what do we do? Do we wait until we have another story of someone who just needs their gallbladder removed to die in a waiting room for a simple procedure that could have happened had there been a place for them to go and receive care? I don't know. I mean, I hope that it comes to the point where we all realize that we have a role to play in this, and we, and our role is to be a part of the collective of keeping our community healthy. And so I have received tons of emails talking about freedoms and liberties and all of that, and I just want to make sure that we understand that we all have a responsibility in this. And it is important that we talk about it and that we be real with the very real situation. You know, just this past, was it two nights ago? We had a shooting at a nightclub. And what happened if, I mean, that was a tragedy that should not have happened, and I'm very sorry for the family and others involved. But those things are real, and those things happen in our community that will tax a hospital system even more than they're already taxed. So I get it that we are put in a tough spot, but we were elected to the Board of Health, and that's our job. And it's important for us to not shy away from these conversations, not pass the buck down to school boards, but really tackle the issue from this bench because that is our job. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Menz, two quick questions for you. One is the hospitals. What percent of the people that are now in ICU are not vaccinated?
I haven't asked that question recently, but I've been told in the past that the ICUs, over 90% of the people in the ICUs are unvaccinated.
Very good. So this is really a problem with the hospitals of the unvaccinated?
Yes, we've had that discussion before. The, if we could get the vaccination numbers up higher, I think it would, that would be the optimal solution to this problem. The vaccine does seem to be effective against the Delta virus.
Well, thank you.
Our vaccination numbers are not moving very much, so.
I think all five commissioners here, Board of Health, agree that vaccination is the way to get out of this. The second question that I've got, if we go back to the order that you wrote here a month or so ago, there was no enforcement action in that order whatsoever. And I guess if you pass a mandate, there has to be some kind of enforcement. I don't see our sheriff going out arresting people or issuing them tickets. I don't see the police, because they don't work for us, doing that. How do you anticipate that we would enforce any kind of a mask mandate?
Well, I think the order that was written, and Justin could speak on this, would direct the businesses in town, the retail businesses, the grocery stores, the Home Depots, some of them which have already done it, but would require all of them to demand masking in their premises. And so I think people will need to continue to shop, and I think in the past, when we had a mask mandate and the businesses were required to enforce that, we had pretty good mask-wearing rates. And it was when the CDC said, well, if you're already vaccinated, you don't need to wear the mask anymore. That's when those mask mandates were relaxed, and guess what? No one wore their mask. And that's when the number of cases started going up. So it's not an enforcement in the sense of the police force or law enforcement going after people, but practically, if people need to wear a mask to get in their places of business and places of purchasing and getting their food and whatever, I think experience indicates it really was pretty good, at least in the stores. I'm not saying they wore the mask outside or other places, but to me, that's in a sense an enforcement.
But the problem with that is that we have confrontations. When you start telling a private business that they now have to enforce something that the public governmental body tells them to enforce, now they're putting their employees in a heck of a place, trying to enforce something with people that disagree with them. So I think that would cause more problems. But thank you, and that's all my questions.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Can we get an update on percentage in our community that's vaccinated?
Well, the latest figures I've seen, and maybe you were directing that to someone else, but I've got to go here in a little bit. Approximately mid-40s, I won't give you an exact number, mid-40s are vaccinated, and probably another 10% of the population is immune from natural infection. So maybe we're in the mid-50s in terms of people being, quotes, "immune," unquotes, to the virus. But Tom or Tim may have updated data that the Health Department's given more recently.
Yeah, Dr. Menz, we've got Tim Kaufman coming to the stand.
I don't have those numbers with me. I can tell you that we're just, we're right around 50% now for eligible vaccinated, and we're around 41% for total percent vaccinated. And then, as Dr. Menz indicated, we've got some folks that have been infected, so. And I will send those numbers to you later this morning.
Okay, thank you.
So I think it's really important that we do have this conversation today because when we spoke about this before, it was right when schools were starting, and, you know, we did start to see a decrease in our positivity rate, which was really good. But as we all knew what would happen with schools being back in session and the majority of them not masking and all of them not masking at the beginning, our numbers are continuing to rise. I think last week, when we had our superintendent call, there was about 4,000 kids in Cedric County on quarantine of some sort. 4,000 kids, that's a lot of kids. That's a lot of parents, especially if they're young kids and can't be home by themselves. And so for parents, I mean, I think it's a good point to discuss, you know, what that does to our economy when people can't work because they have to stay home with their kids, and they weren't expecting that. I mean, how many jobs are going to let someone just take off for a week and a half with no notice and keep their job? It's just not the reality for so many people. So it is important that we're watching this because our positivity rate is over 9% again with so many kids being quarantined, and that's just the kids. That's not teachers or school staff or anybody else. That's just children. So it's, it's, it's hard because I started having calls weekly with our superintendents, anybody who's able to get on at that time, and we've had a pretty good number each week so far. I can tell you that there is a big difference in the conversations we had before school started and the conversations we had last Thursday. They are beyond frustrated. They are exhausted, and school just started. Their nurses and the staff that are helping them with testing and contact tracing are overwhelmed. They are begging us to do something. Last week, I mean, they were saying that it was like a wildfire. It's lit, it's started, and they don't know what to do to slow it down. And I heard repeatedly that they're asking the Board of Health to do our jobs. I don't know how to say that nicer, but we are the Board of Health. This is our job. We have Dr. Menz and other physicians that'll come and speak to us whenever we ask for them to come and speak to us. Board of Education, they don't have that same ability because there's so many of them. And I understand that each district is a little bit different, but we are seeing numerous clusters in schools and primarily in the younger kids. And thankfully, they're not getting as sick as adults when they get this, so they're not filling our hospitals yet. But the number in our hospitals is growing. It will continue to grow if we do nothing to slow this down. That's the reality of it. It's only a matter of time before a kid gets really sick or we lose a teacher. I mean, it's not, it's not a matter of if, but when, unfortunately. And we just need to do our jobs as the Board of Health, listen to the medical professionals who have spent their lives really working to keep our community safe. I mean, we've been hearing from our hospitals for weeks that they cannot keep this up. For weeks, we've been hearing that, and we have yet to take action on it. It's not just COVID patients. I tell my family, you know, be careful when you drive. Please don't text and drive right now because if you get in a wreck and you need an ICU bed, you might not have one. And that's the reality of what we're facing right now, and it's kind of mind-blowing to me that that has been going on for so many weeks. We have heard this for so many weeks. We have not done anything, and we wonder why it's continuing to get worse. Now with school starting, I mean, it's just, it's really hard for me to wrap my mind around, and I just, you know, I feel for our medical community. Right now, I feel for our schools and their nursing staff and the paras and the parents and the kids and everything else that goes along with this. And it is frustrating because the state has taken away any of our ability for kids to remote learn. So my daughter is high-risk. She's got an autoimmune disease, and she was on quarantine, and she couldn't go to school. And she's also National Junior Honor Society, which is exciting for her, but she missed seven days of PE class, which is participation points. So now she's going to have a bad grade in gym, which could affect her stance to even be on the National Junior Honor Society. So, I mean, there are just so many things that are just so frustrating, and our hands are tied in so many ways, and a lot of that is at the state level. And I hate that that's the case, but that's the case. And so we can control what we can control, we can't control the state. So we need to do everything we can to protect these kids, to keep them out of quarantine if possible, and masking would do that. So thank you, Dr. Menz, for being here today. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for bringing this up. It is important that we're watching these numbers and just seeing where this is going because it's not looking good now. We knew this was going to happen weeks ago. We said it was going to happen, and now we're watching it happen. So I can tell you in a couple more weeks what's going to happen because it's going to continue, but if we do nothing, then I guess we'll just watch it, continue to watch it happen. Thank you.
I apologize, but I'm about 15 minutes late to a meeting I have with people in Kansas City on Zoom, so there's no more questions. I think I'm going to have to sign off.
Right. I don't see any more questions, Dr. Menz. Thanks again for being available and appreciate all you do. So thank you.
All right, well, and I know this is a difficult issue for all of us. It's very difficult. It's very difficult.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. No other comments? I don't even know if this is a receive and file report or just this agenda item is over and we move on? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts' Regular Meeting on September 2nd, 2021.
Hi, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Boards, Board of Bids and Contracts on September 2nd results in four items that we bring before you this morning. The first one is a bridge replacement, and that's for the county bridge located at Ridge Road between 39th and 47th Streets South. And this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Klaver Construction Company Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $761,811.75. Item two is the on-call commercial real estate broker services for facilities maintenance, and this recommendation is to accept the proposals for the on-call real estate broker services from CBRE Incorporated, also Reese Nickel, South Central Kansas, and Lang Real Estate LLC at the rates listed, and this will be for a contract period of two years with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is an on-call hazard preparedness, planning, consulting, and recovery services for Division of Finance, which is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. And these services is to, it would be the recommendation to accept the proposal from Wit O'Briens LLC for the contracted rates as listed, and this will be for a period starting August 1st, 2021 through July 31st, 2023. The final item is also related to the on-call hazard preparedness, planning, consulting, and recovery services, also funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. And this, this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Disaster Recovery Services LLC for the contracted rates listed in that same period of time, which starts August 1st, 2021 through July 31st, 2023. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
All right, Joe. A busy time for the Board of Bids. Thank you for your report. Are any questions about any of the items that, that Joe referenced? If not, I will make a, a motion to approve the Board of Bids and Contractors as presented. There's a motion in a second. Let's see, other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Hi.
Commissioner Dennis.
Hi.
Commissioner Howell.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Chairman Meitzner.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks again, Joe. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. We have 22 items on consent today, one of which is a KDOT funding to construct a bridge on 21st North over Rock Creek between 375th and 391st Street West, which is in District 3, and another item, which is a consideration of a grant renewal for the Older Americans Act in the amount of $3,215,944 for the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services in their fiscal year of 2022. The rest of it is routine, so I ask that you approve items consent, items A, I'm sorry, K through AF this morning.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation. I'll make a motion that we approve items K through A, Apple, F, Frank. There's a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments about any of the items? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Hi.
Commissioner Dennis.
Hi.
Commissioner Howell.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Would this be the appropriate time to adjourn for the fire before we come back for committee and wrap up? Okay, we'll do that. We will recess and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, please, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Was there anybody, I didn't, we didn't have any comments from Public Agenda on the Fire Department, so we will close that and go to the next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda. Tom.
Yes, Tom Stoles again. County Manager's Office recommended approval of consent item A, Adam, this morning.
Okay. Any questions about consent item A on the Fire Agenda? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve consent item A.
Second.
Motion in a second. Being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Any other business in front of the Fire, in front of the Fire District One? I don't see any, so we will adjourn the Fire District meeting, governing body of the Fire District Number One, and return from recess back to the regular scheduled commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Committee Reports. Do, does any of the Commissioners have anything to report on the committees that they may serve on? Okay, I don't see any at this time, so we, we will close the committee reports. Next item, please.
Other.
Other. Commissioners, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. So I am trying to get as many donations and cards and thank yous for our medical community as I can. I'm collecting items until the beginning of next week. I have a whole bunch of elementary schools that are doing this and have the cutest little cards that are coming in, but if anybody is interested in creating cards in their classrooms or just want more information, please reach out to me, and I would love to get that to you, and as much as we can get for our medical community, I think the better. I mean, I, I say it a lot, but they are struggling and they really need a morale boost, and they need to know that they're valued and that we appreciate them. So that's the whole point with this, but if you want to help in any way, please let me know, and I would love your assistance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I know you put a lot of effort into that. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to provide some follow-up comment. A couple weeks ago, we talked about an opportunity for me to visit the hospitals, and although I haven't had a chance to visit Wesley, I do appreciate an invitation from Via Christi, and I did spend quite a bit of time there. Altogether, the president of the, of the hospital, Kevin Strecker, did provide his undivided attention, frankly. It was really quite an opportunity for me to go inside the hospital and see what's all, see what's going on, examine, to my, to my heart's content, all the things I had questions on, and I appreciate their, their grace, allowing me to have that privilege to do that. And we did get to go basically all over the entire hospital and, and ask lots of questions, and I presented to him quite a bit of data that I, I think that causes conflict, and, and they actually did not have good answers to some of the questions that I had, but they're, they certainly are committed to digging into those questions and trying to find out where the conflicts are, are stemming from. And to that end, they, they are seeking to do that, and they, they promised to provide some data back to me on some of my questions. So we're not done with the conversation just yet, but one of the things I think that's caused a lot of conflict is the fact that we have some, some federal sites and even state sites that talks about the number of beds available. And to my satisfaction, I would tell you that I believe that the, the county reporting data is actually quite accurate on our bed status. So I think that's, one of my takeaways is, in my mind, when I hear about bed status, I'm going to kind of disregard some of the federal websites and even state websites and look at what's being provided through a verbal report through a management team. I think that's the right data, and there are reasons why those numbers are different. In fact, in fact, in fact, it's quite, quite interesting, the history of the hospital, to find out why these numbers are so vastly different, and they are extremely different. But there is really detailed and complicated, complex answers as to why they're different. To that end, I think the hospital, you know, I think they intend to do this. They haven't actually got it solved yet, but I think they intend to provide better bed data to KDHE, who then will report up to the U.S. Health and Human Services and CDC websites, I think, that talk about bed space. And I think that that'll, that'll hopefully bring things back in line with each other. So that's one of the, one of the, one of the things I think that was valuable in our visit. Second thing is, I did get to actually go inside of a COVID ward and get to see exactly what that's like, and I would tell you that it is obviously extremely difficult for staff to deal with this each and every day, and I want to just put my appreciation, appreciation out to them, say thank you for what they do. This is not an easy job, obviously. It's extremely hard. Again, I haven't had the chance to go through Wesley yet, and maybe I'll still get that opportunity, but I, I think that the way that Via Christi handles COVID by having a separate ward area, I think is much, is very efficient, and I know that they are doing a tremendous job. I think they've got the best outcomes probably of any hospital in our state and possibly, you know, even a larger region because of the things they're doing there. And they're efficient and they're, and they're effective, and so I want to say thank you for their, their innovative ways of handling this, this challenge, and so I do know it's extremely difficult what they're, what they're dealing with. Once again, I plan on putting out maybe more of a statement once I get the data from the hospitals that I've requested. I'm still kind of waiting on that, so I haven't received all the information that I was wanting to get from them yet, but I, I assume that they're still working on that. When I get that data, I, I will probably write up a narrative exactly what I, what I discovered by going through the hospitals. But I do want to share just upfront, I did get to go through there and get to see it for myself, and I appreciate greatly what they do there. I think they're a tremendous hospital, and the staff is fantastic, and I know it's hard, what they're dealing with. As a bonus, I did get to spend several hours with Ron Baker. If you don't know, he's a former basketball star here at Wichita State University and NBA star as well, so I want to say thank you for that opportunity. He's now a spokesperson for the hospital system and just a great personality, so that was kind of fun to spend some time with him as well. And then finally, changing topics entirely, I am one of these people that really focuses a lot on, on gun safety. I think that we need to have law-abiding citizens that are trained and they manage their firearms responsibly, and with that, we know from talking to, to police officers here in Wichita, one of the biggest problems we have in, in the Wichita, in the Wichita area is guns being stolen from cars. I think there's a lot of reasons as to why that happens, but to that end, I wanted just to point out there's an opportunity this, this Saturday, I believe it starts at 9:00 AM, that Range 54 will be handing out 500 gun safes so that responsible gun owners can lock up their firearms in their vehicles, or should they have to leave it in their vehicle for some reason. And they're going to be providing this for free. So that'll start at 9 o'clock this, this weekend at Range 54, which is a 5725 East Gate Lock. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And also, I think it's important for us as a commission and the public to know that last week I got to be involved in Julie, the EOC preparedness on Hurricane Ida was potentially going to send various cities around the country, some patients in care homes, and especially hospital patients, to various parts of the country, try to evacuate. And we were on notice that we were going to receive some, but we didn't know for sure, and to be on a, on a Zoom call or a conference call with about, gosh, 20 or 25, Rusty was on, Tim was on, 20, coordinating 20 or 25, including our EMS and our sheriff and police and everybody, to, to imagine 10 patients landing out at, on a C-135, and, and their staff would stay on the plane, so from the, from the landing to wherever their destination was, a hospital or depending on maybe a pediatrics patient or whatever. But Julie, I just want to compliment Julie. She coordinated that, and to hear how our community works together to potentially handle this was very impressive for me to witness. I, I was not asked, and I did not get to say one word because there was a lot of departments that were expert in this area in coordinating that, including, like I said, our EMS, ambulance service, private companies, everything else as far as hospitalizations and care homes, whatever. So I just share that. I think we've got word that, that we are not receiving any Hurricane Ida patients from care homes or hospitals, so it was kind of a, a great exercise in preparedness that, that we didn't fortunately have to, to use, especially with our hospitals being quite full. So I just wanted to share that with everybody and, and know that behind the scenes, there's a lot of people working when, when disaster is hitting not only us but around, around the country. So I don't know, anybody else have anything to share? And I don't see any, so next item.
Executive Session.
Executive Session. We, we do not have an executive session, and so we do not have anything other. So thank you for tuning in today and have a good and safe week, and we will see everybody next week. Adjourned.